Okay, good morning. It is Thursday, June 22nd. Commissioner Ed Rothstein, we have pretty full open session for this morning. But as we always do, let's take a moment and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, why don't we start with Commissioner Vigliotti, what's going on up in District 1? What's on your mind?
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner. I was a lot more, I spoke a lot more at length last week, and I'll save some of my remarks for this coming week, given the length of our schedule today, but I'll very briefly note that a number of us were present at the Maryland Municipal League Chapter Dinner last week, which was a combined meeting between Carroll County and Frederick County municipalities. We had some of our state delegates there, one of our state senators there, and this, I think, goes to the heart of how this board is trying to move forward, continuing to grow relations with our municipalities, seeing them as vital partners in the work that we do. And so it was a really enjoyable time. Our deputy county administrator, Deb Effingham, was also present, and it was a really good evening, and it's wonderful to be able to network with our fellow elected officials and our state delegates and our senators. It's just another way of being able to advance the cause of our county, and that's it for me this morning.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you. I'm gonna echo Commissioner Vigliotti's comments about the MML dinner. I thought it was a very well-attended event, and I thought it was a good opportunity for us to interact with both our colleagues locally, as well as those that were, are not, those in Frederick as well. And then on Saturday, I attended the Westminster Beer and Barbecue Stroll in downtown Westminster. That was a very successful event, a lot of individuals in attendance, and was a good event for both local restaurants and those that were exhibiting and attending the event. Also on Saturday, I took my parents, who were diehard country fans, to go see Lee Greenwood. So I had the rare opportunity to meet Lee Greenwood, who is 80 years old.
Wow.
And he's going to perform for one more year, and kind of fascinating, because you know, we have a tendency to think of certain songs of his, but he actually had 22 albums, eight compilation albums, 40 singles, and seven number-one hits.
That's impressive.
Also got to meet the young lady, Alexis Wilkins, who was his, who opened up for Lee Greenwood. She has a platinum album, which has garnered over a million hits so far, that has been played both on streaming platforms and others, and I think she's a very up-and-coming musical talent, and she's also very, very supportive of veterans. We had a conversation briefly about veterans and her interest in supporting them. I thought that was absolutely wonderful as well. On Monday, I, myself, and Senator Reedy, and a number of individuals from the Carroll County Veterans Independence Project were able to visit with a Carroll County resident, Mr. George Keeney, who served in the Army for six years, and for some interesting reason, Mr. Keeney was never awarded physically his Air Medal with his silk, or excuse me, silver oak leaf clusters. Mr. Keeney's been doing, he's been in hospice for some time, and his, his health has been deteriorating quite rapidly. When he was, when he was notified that he was going to be receiving his medal, his health rallied quite significantly. It was a, it was a true honor and a pleasure to meet him, and to see the face, the smile on his face when he received that medal was definitely something that, without question, was just absolutely incredible. Was definitely, someone had asked me recently, what are, what are things that you enjoy about being a commissioner? Well, I can tell you, seeing the look on his face and the appreciation of that, as in his family's, was just absolutely remarkable. On Tuesday morning, Commissioner Kyler and Commissioner Rothstein, along with myself, attended the Chamber Breakfast, where I spoke about some of the happenings within the county, and also what we're doing in District 3, some of the various businesses and such. So we had that on Tuesday. And then Wednesday, yesterday, I attended the Chambers Event for Gage Digital Media's 10th Anniversary, a company that's been in the county now for a decade, and obviously, as a small business owner, that's pretty significant to make it 10 years. So I have to congratulate Joe Dominic and Brett Calgary and their staff for an incredible 10 years in Carroll County. And then, last but not least, I'll mention that next Thursday, which this event is typically on the weekends, next Thursday is the 160th Anniversary of Corbett's Charge, and they will be holding the event on Thursday. And of course, for those that may not be aware, Corbett's Charge was the skirmish that occurred on June 29th, 1863, in Westminster, when the American, during the Civil War, when we had the Confederate General Jeb Stuart coming through Westminster and, and ended up running into the Delaware First Cavalry right before Gettysburg. So pivotal piece in our local history, as well as potentially the national history. Some do contribute the delay of Stuart to them having the defeat in Gettysburg later on. So that'll be next Thursday, with various memorial events and other historic events in Westminster. So, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Gary?
Thank you, and good morning, Carroll County. I wanted to follow up on a discussion I had last week in Priorit Carroll, where I got in-depth a little bit on, we all know on July 1st, the legalization of recreational-use cannabis takes an effect in Maryland, but the sale and how different counties and municipalities are handing that, handling that are quite different. And I received a lot of feedback from people in the county, overwhelmingly positive. I heard from a lot of health officials, people in the school system, a lot of parents, a lot of people from other municipalities within the county that I have shared all these materials with, from the organization called LearnAboutSAM.org, which is an organization that's committed to smarter approaches to marijuana, LearnAboutSAM.org. I encourage people to go there. So I received a lot of feedback. I appreciate it. I wanted to again remind folks that this is an issue discussing the sale of it, not the usage. We are not going to be going out to the Carroll County Sheriff's Office or the Maryland State Police, telling them to ignore that law that was passed, but this is an issue, it's a local issue of the sale and recreational distribution, and distribution of the substance of the drug within our county, in our towns, in our communities. And what I think is interesting is just since last week, there have been some very, I think, positive developments. Ocean City, New Jersey, Ocean City, New Jersey, a place that gets a lot of people there in the summer, it's a family place. They voted unanimously on an ordinance that prohibits businesses from cultivating, manufacturing, testing, or selling marijuana. Oh, wow, what do you know? Let's keep going. Ocean City, Maryland, just last week, did the same thing. We've all been to Ocean City, Maryland, they are concerned about this for a reason. Ocean City, Maryland, voted to ban businesses that sell marijuana and allow the consumption on-site. They also voted to put, to pause temporarily on the application process or issuance of business licenses for growing, processing, and selling it. And one of my favorite beaches, Dewey, has done the same thing. Lo and behold, last week, the Dewey Beach Commissioners vote unanimously to prohibit marijuana growth and sales. So I think this movement, if you will, amongst those with legislative and executive powers in this state, is growing. I think there's a reason that these locations have decided to go this route, because they know that this is gonna be a real problem. And for those of you who, you know, hit me up, and again, I love the emails and the text messages and all that stuff, I love it, positive or negative, but you don't conflate the two. We're talking about the sale, and I think a lot of people make the mistake of getting into discussion about alcohol, and I'll remind people that in a lot of counties and towns throughout this country, I don't think there's many left, but we did have dry counties and towns at one point. Damascus, Maryland, which is not far from Mount Airy, was a dry town until 2013, after about 132 years. So don't be confused by the two. We are, when we discuss this issue of sale and distribution, we are completely within our rights and our means to do so, and I think people, when you go on the internet, the longer you search for this topic, you will find more and more municipalities and counties doing exactly what I discussed last week. They are banning its use, they're banning its sale and distribution, because they know, from an economic standpoint, what it's gonna do to them. And I mentioned a couple of great places, Ocean City, New Jersey, Ocean City, Maryland, Dewey Beach, those are wonderful places. I think Carroll County's pretty wonderful, too. I know these places are on the beach. Unfortunately, we don't have a beach in Carroll County unless it's on a lake or something, but I happen to think we have a pretty darn good county, and I wanna protect it, and I think, I think the rest of us do as well. So as this discussion goes forward, I wanna encourage people to respond and chime in, but I wanna make sure people understand what, what the big issue is here. Go to LearnAboutSAM.org for more information, whether you're a parent, or an educator, or a legislator, or an elected official, to educate yourself. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kyler?
Yeah, and just to piggyback that with just one comment more, be cautious about your employer and their regulations, because if I hadn't retired from Stewart &amp; Tate, regardless whether it's legal, regardless when I traveled to Colorado, if I came back and had a random test and it showed up, I'd be terminated. So be cautious about that. I love Carroll County, and more so, or as much so, I love my family. We're in the middle of Mimi Summer Camp, our six grandkids are here. They've been playing in the treehouse up in the woods. We've been going to carnivals. They do their investigations on their own. There's the treehouse, it's part constructed. They decided last night, two nights ago, that there was a carnival in Hagerstown. It wasn't their fault there wasn't one in Carroll County. We did find- We did find one in Thurmont that was a little closer, and some of them will be here next week. We will get to Carroll County Carnivals, too, and we always do. It's, it's great to support them. Yeah, there's five of them. The oldest one, Willis, was working, and couldn't go with us, but there we are at Thurmont Calendar Carnival. And there we are after dinner at Greenmount, and I did get back out of the chair by myself. I've gotta, I've gotta say that. But yes, I love family and Mimi Summer Camp. That's Father's Day brunch, and that's our group there for, for brunch together, and it's, we're all blessed with family, and that's great. Now, non-family, Carroll Community College, we had the trustees meeting, they did a ceremony for Alan Schuman retiring, and that, that was great. We did go to Maryland Municipal League. Four of us attended that, while one of us was representing us at Mako, and so that was a productive evening for all of us. We did all listen to Commissioner Gordon at breakfast, and that was great and well-received. Veterans Advisory Council had their meeting, and, and all the veterans organizations, you mentioned Veterans Independence, and, and the other ones that often attend these meetings and talk. One of the things we talked about, and I know Commissioner Rothstein has said it several times, it's very hard to get veterans, even the ones with needs, to reach out. And I know I currently have a couple who are both veterans, another family that the husband's a veteran. They've all told me they need help, how do they get help? I give them a phone number, and they don't do anything. And I think I got, at, at our Veterans Advisory Council, I think I got a couple of people there to volunteer, get me their name and number. We've had good success with calling them, and, and it was interesting, they, they talked about a gentleman that Dr. Whack just recommended to them. And he didn't want to talk to anybody, he didn't want anything done. They now have him getting Meals on Wheels, getting, getting, getting some money that he's well-deserved, getting him a place to live. And he, he was in Westminster, but not noticed by people. And I think he, he went to Health Department for some mental health issues, but they can help with that, too. So yeah, please reach out, and try to encourage veterans to get the help they so deserve. And then my last thing, I want to thank our many boards and commissions. I've attended a few meetings lately, and I know, and I reminded the members, you applied for this, we didn't make you do it, you know, but they have some, some long, rough meetings, and make some hard decisions, and, and I don't know that, they get credit when something goes wrong from many community members, but I don't know that they get enough credit for what they do and how hard they work at it. So I do want to compliment them. Thank you.
No, I, I appreciate it. Topic I wasn't going to talk about, but I often do, and that's our veterans. So I appreciate what you're sharing, and it's, it's so true. The reason Carroll County is so good, when it comes to taking care of our veterans, it's because we recognize it's not an "or" statement, but it's an "and." It's not go here or there, or, or use these folks or those folks. It's "and," you know, use these folks and these folks. It's not exclusivity. It is not a 501(c)(3), whether it's the Legion or anyone else, saying, well, we can do this, no one else can do what we do. It's "and." It's always an "and." And if folks do not take the opportunity to reach out to the services, like you said, they deserve, I take the number, I call, you know, I'm straight up, I call Celine Steckel and Gina Valentine, I said, take this one on, and they reach out to the individual, and they walk them through the process. My Veteran Support Officer does phenomenal work here in the county, and also has served my dad as he passed, and you know, the, the honors and the gravestone markers are all being processed through, you know, these services. It's not an "or," or the, you know, but it's an "and," and we've got to continue to work together. That's what makes Carroll County so great, when it comes to our veterans. Too many veterans feel like they don't deserve it. And, oh, I only served two years, or I only was drafted for a year and a half, and it was in 1965 to 67. You know, they deserve it, and we just have to continue to remind ourselves of that and them. So I do appreciate that, you know, bringing that up. I did go to Mako, Maryland Association of Counties, I'm on the Board of Directors. There are 16 on the Board of Directors, there's 24 jurisdictions, the counties in Baltimore City. We were in Howard County, the President of the Board highlights the county for a day, and then goes through some legislative issues, or we go through legislative issues. So Howard County was highlighted, and you know, I, Dr. Ball, County Executive, he did a great job, there was a lot, the best part about is the sidebar conversations about practices, best practices or challenges we have within our communities during that day. And then also looking at some of the highlights that are shared. But the next day, we talk about specific issues, and you know, some of those issues were EV vehicles, electronic vehicles, and moving towards that, whether that's a good idea or a bad idea, is it more economical, and all that kind of fun stuff. So I took that information, and I shared it with the county, and we'll see if DPW, you know, feels like that's of value or not, but it's just another tool in the toolbox, you know, that was shared. Blueprint was discussed. The new MAB, which is Maryland, what does that stand for?
Association Boards of Education.
Maryland Association Boards of Education has a new, I think, Executive Director and President of their Board, and they were there. So Mako, and, and we are committing ourselves to work with MAB, we being Mako, we, in other words, the jurisdictions working with MAB, as we're moving forward with the black hole of Blueprint, and we all recognize it's a black hole, because nobody knows what's, what's going in. And you know, we're, we're all saying the same thing, that we're all challenged, it's a herd of elephants, and we're going to figure this out, you know, a piece at a time. Some counties are more challenged than others, especially with the funding. And you know, we're, we're going to go through some of that, but fortunately, I believe we have very good legislators, that we are very open and candid to talk to, we have very good Board of Education, that we're very open and willing to talk to, along with CCPS, so, or Carroll County Public Schools leadership. So we'll get through that. The other was, that was mentioned, cannabis, marijuana does go into effect for recreational use for adults 21 and over in Maryland, starting one July. If you remember, a couple of weeks ago, we had the Mako leadership say, well, they have to work through, they being legislators, some of the, still the laws, and you know, it may take a year or two, and I'm, you know, I was pretty straight up saying, well, why are we doing something if we don't have the processes in place to safeguard ourselves? And it's pretty frustrating, and it's frustrating for a lot of folks. But with that said, the train's left the station, whether we like that or not, and we have to commit ourselves to doing what is best for Carroll County, when it comes to this new law that takes effect. It's going to be tough, you know, but I think it's important that we measure twice, measure twice and cut once, you know, and not just throw it all out there, because once that cat's out of the bag, it's going to be hard to pull it back in, so. But there are restrictions, you know, that are put in place, you know, it's not about, if we don't do this, well, we don't get the 1.5% tax. That's, train's left the station, and I, that was one of the first questions I had. So there's definitely concerns about that. More to follow, as we continue to focus our attention on it. In August, we have the Summer Conference, Mako, that's starting to take shape, as far as the meetings on Wednesday afternoon, Thursday, and Friday through Saturday. All the things I'm just talking about are going to be at the Mako Conference. So it's so important that the leadership comes together and says, okay, these are the things we want to influence our, our governor and our legislators on. So, and Mako, there's more red than there is blue at the table, just by the numbers. Now, it may not be the size, but it's not about size at the table, it's about the numbers. So, so that's an important piece of this as well. So it was a very productive meeting last week at Mako, or in Howard County. Last thing is, I hope everyone had a very happy Father's Day on Sunday, and enjoyed their time with family and with friends. Hope those that celebrated Juneteenth on Monday, I know it was a federal holiday, but also, I guess, a state and federal holiday on Monday, and understood the purpose of Juneteenth, and the, the importance, not just purpose of Juneteenth. Okay. I think before we get into the meat of the agenda, you have one more Priority Carroll activity you want to talk about.
Yes. I'm honored to get to read a certificate of recognition for Mr. Jeff Daggett. And just a little background before I read, probably, probably 1969, I was a college student, came home for the summer, and this wouldn't happen today, went to the principal of North Carroll High School, and said, I'd love to have a wrestling group through the summer, college kids could work out with the high school kids, it'd be great, you have a nice wrestling room here. And he looked at me and said, you're not using my school, that's what YMCAs are for. Well, 1971, the department got formed. That year, and probably the next year, Vince DePalmer in Manchester worked very hard to establish Manchester Wrestling, I mean, Man, Manchester Rec Council, now North Carroll Rec Council, and invited me to be on the board and form Manchester Wrestling, and we did that. And I remember you coming to Carroll County, I remember when you became a director, and while positive correlation doesn't prove cause and effect, I'm also going to remember that I got elected Commissioner and you decide to leave. So, you know. But there we go. Certificate of Recognition, this certificate is awarded to Jeff R. Daggett, in recognition of over 32 years of distinguished service to Carroll County Government. You exemplify the highest standard of performance and commitment in executing the vast responsibilities in your role as Director of Recreation and Parks since January 1, 2006. As only the fourth Director since the department was founded in 1971, your leadership is evident in many areas, including opening over half of the county's 30 parks, opening two community centers, establishing the Park Legacy Fund, adding 225 acres of parkland, overseeing the development of recreation councils, and growing the department from 17 to over 500 programs offered to our community. For your dedication to Carroll County and 10 Boards of County Commissioners, we wholeheartedly thank you and wish you the very best for your future. Signed by the current Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know you have a long agenda, so I will be brief, much briefer than the 32 years. When I left Baltimore County in 1990 and came here, it was one of the most difficult decisions I had made in my life. And I stalled as long as I could before I really had to make a decision one way or the other. It ended up being the best decision, one of the best decisions I've ever made. I will say second-best decision, the first one was marrying my wife Lisa. So that will keep me out of hot water, hopefully.
Good answer.
Yes. See, you learn over the years. When I made the decision to retire, it was also one of the most difficult decisions, because I love Carroll County as well, and it's a great place to work, we have a wonderful staff, fantastic staff, and a dedicated group of volunteers. When I came here from Baltimore County, I could not believe how much more volunteers do here. And some of it's out of necessity, but a lot of it is out of love for their community, they just want to give back. So it's been a very, very rewarding career here. It's been very rewarding, having 44 years in the field, and somehow coming out the other end and still feeling good about that. And I am looking forward to retirement and spending more time with my wife and family. So thank you for all of your support, and I guess, you, you learn a lot of things along the way, and I guess one of the things I learned is 32 and a half years is my limit of working with this guy.
That's a pretty good run. That's a pretty good run.
It is a pretty good run, and to be honest, that's one of the things I'll regret most, is not being able to work with you longer in your current role. But I appreciate all of your support, and all the other boards, and it's hard to believe 10 boards, but...
Most of the other boards, no, I'm kidding. Now, congratulations, and thank you for your selfless service to a community. You know, it, it's truly out of, out of, out of love for a community, the work you did, and it shows. I mean, it is highlighted in so many ways. And you know, it's not about you being up front, it's about you leading a team, and you're always about that, you know, it's not, and just when we do the volunteer recognition, you know, it's, it's about team. So I've learned a lot from you in that, so just thank you. And really good luck in all of your future endeavors down in Carolina, right?
Yes.
And good health to you and to Lisa and the family, so.
Thank you.
Any...
I will echo Commissioner Rothstein's generous and kind statements, and agree with him completely. I mean, I, you know, we've only been in these positions, most of us, for six months, and I, you know, blessed to have been able to work with you for that time, and to be able to come to call you a friend as well. You know, it, I think that, that what you do preserves part of God's earth for everybody to be able to enjoy. I mean, we have a park system in this county that I have never seen anywhere else. Nothing else is ever compared to what I've seen here. And you've been the central driving force behind that for the last, you know, 16, 17, whatever, what's it been, 16?
This is 17 as Director, and almost 33 total.
And that is absolutely incredible. I mean, you certainly left your mark on this county, and we really will miss you. I mean, I certainly will. And I, you know, will always treasure that day that you took me out to what will become the future Northwest Regional Park, and, and trekking through mud, and, and almost getting our drone attacked by a hawk, and... But it's just, it's absolutely, you've been a blessing, and I pray God will bless you and your family in every single possible way, and everything you do in the future.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'll just echo very briefly on their comments, and say, Jeff, you know, we greatly appreciate all you've done in your longstanding career here, and wish you and Lisa the best in future adventures, and some relaxation.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Jeff, thank you very much for your service. You will be missed, and I know it's only been about six months, but I, we have worked a few issues down in District Four, and it was a pleasure, and we came up with some great solutions along the way. So thank you for that, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. I think the best thing about my time here is I could probably count on one-handed days it actually felt like work. Most of it was genuinely enjoyable, and I'll tell you now, I would have done it for free, but I'm...
How you tell us?
Yeah, I wouldn't have told you then. But not many people get to say that in their life, so I feel pretty fortunate for that.
Pretty awesome. So, we want to get our last photo?
Yep, let's do the obligatory photo, Matt or Greg, whoever's going to come out, whichever door.
Jeff, you have to be a little disappointed by the size of the proclamation, given the checks that you've given out.
It's not shaped like a fish, either. It's not shaped like a fish, either.
Thank you.
I brought the envelope since it's raining and you're not in our building. Thank you.
Okay, let's get to, uh, some business with approval of a budget transfer and budget adjustment for FY 23 Carroll County Public Schools.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Rob Burke, CFO with Carroll County Public Schools. And, uh.
And the last man standing there too, it sounds like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. With school out, uh, our, some of our leadership taking some time, some family time away. And so, uh, I'm alone here today. Uh, good news is not here to ask for any money for blueprint. I will save that for another day. Um, this is in, uh, obviously in preparation for, uh, year end here at the end of the month. The Carroll County Board of Education, uh, considered and approved four, uh, budget action items at their most recent, um, open meeting on June 14th. Um, so, uh, as you know, by state law, the Board of Ed, um, budget items are required to be, uh, approved by the, uh, county government. So, uh, we've submitted four action items. These are primarily, um, recognizing some unanticipated revenue and expenditures, uh, on, on several adjustments and the, um, annual process of, uh, transfers among categories, uh, in order to, uh, make sure that we are, uh, coming in at year end, spending within categories. So no additional funding here. This is all net, uh, sort of net impact of zero, uh, for the action items. I can, uh, walk through them for you. I could do them, uh, one at a time or all four, whatever your preference would be.
And could you touch on all four of them very briefly?
Okay. So the first is our operating budget transfer 23 dash 01. This is our annual transfer item. Um, this, uh, nets about 3.3 million in total of, um, transfers among categories, primarily to recognize a few, uh, cost increases in certain areas. We saw an increase in employee health, uh, costs. Uh, we saw an increase in technology and in, uh, maintenance, uh, inflationary cost drivers there. And then, uh, with the, uh, the one blueprint item is the, uh, full tuition cost now that we're paying for students at, uh, Carroll Community College for dual enrollment. That wasn't quite fully understood and captured in our initial, uh, budget adoption for fiscal year 23. So we're using, uh, some savings from other categories, primarily salary savings, um, uh, and some of the other categories to cover those, uh, uh, budgetary items. The second would be our first operating budget adjustment, 23 dash 01. Uh, this is to recognize the, um, in-kind support from county government related to the SRO, the School Resource Officer Program. Uh, at the time that we adopted the budget for fiscal year 23, we weren't, um, didn't get to recognize that. So, uh, this will be the final year where this will be a budget adjustment. We were able to build, uh, this into the ongoing budget for fiscal year 24. So this is about, uh, a little over 1.3 million of recognizing the costs that are in the sheriff's office to supply the school resource officers. The second budget adjustment, 23 dash 02, is, uh, the result of unanticipated costs and to recognize the insurance recovery revenue of several events that happened at the schools throughout the year. Uh, the first was the storm damage in central office that, uh, damaged the roof and did some flooding in upper, uh, offices. Uh, the, uh, Christmas holiday break saw several, uh, flood, floods at various schools with burst pipes. And the, uh, most recent was, uh, a fire in the, uh, front offices at South Carroll High School. So unfortunately, three, uh, events that occurred to the schools during the year, uh, that, uh, are covered by insurance, but the, uh, expenditure, uh, would exceed our existing budget authority. So we'll write up the, uh, revenues with the insurance proceeds, a little over 440,000 total there. And the last is our food service budget, uh, 23 dash 01, food service adjustment. Uh, this is, uh, primarily, uh, federal revenue related to the school program, uh, with the increase in free and reduced meals and the, um, um, continued operation of a lot of the free meals related to, uh, COVID grants and so forth. Um, we saw, uh, additional spending and federal revenues in our food service program, a little over $3.5 million, uh, federal revenue. And then also, uh, some use of fund balance as we are, uh, using some of those funds to replenish and replace, um, some of the kitchen equipment at many of the schools. We've been, uh, fairly aggressive in that program over the last year or so, making some good headway in renewing a lot of the, uh, onsite equipment at the schools. So, uh, that's the four budget action items that were approved by the Board of Education on June 14th for your consideration. And if you have any questions, uh, I'll see if I can work through them.
This might be more for our side of the fence than yours. What was the logic in changing the SRO's cost to be in this report instead of, I guess in the prior, it was the sheriff's?
So the costs still remain in the sheriff's. Those are employees of the county government, the sheriff's office. The costs are still there. Um, there's a process in the accounting and financial reporting to make sure that costs are captured, that fully capture the set of costs of, of any, uh, operation. Since these costs are, um, considered in support of the school system, they're really, you know, they're, the activity that they provide is in support of the school system, then we recognize those costs on the school system's books as well. Offset it with a, a non-cash revenue called in-kind. So this isn't any money changing hands, but it is necessary in order to capture the cost. It, it would have us exceed that category total, so we need to recognize it. Uh, really nothing changed in the operational side of how it is, simply the recognition of this as an additional revenue of support, uh, by the county for the school system.
I answered that beautifully, didn't I?
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes, yes. Well, now, did, did he make the schools do it? Or was he with the schools and was made to do it? Which, which, what was the timing there?
I think that's a chicken or egg question.
It was, it was my idea that later came back to, uh.
Haven't you?
To bite me, yeah. Uh, no, it's really, um, you know, certainly a great program and, and definitely appreciated by the school system. Um, I think once initial kinks were worked out, that program's really working well. And, um, so as I mentioned, now we know ongoing, we captured the cost of this program and this in-kind revenue in our fiscal year 24 budget, so we won't need to do this adjustment again.
And, and, uh, irrelevant to the motions, uh, I want to compliment past boards, the sheriff's office, the school system. Um, we have, we have an SRO program that is, is honored nationwide, not just statewide, but nationwide. And, and you see so many individual, Colorado, Denver, got rid of them. Well, who'd have thought they're now having problems in schools? They, they might put them back, you know? And then we went through the period of, uh, well, they shouldn't be allowed to have handguns. Well, maybe they should leave them in the car. So you can say, well, just wait a minute. I got to run to my car. Don't do anything. Um, and we haven't had those issues, knock on wood. So I, I just want to compliment everybody for coming up with that program and, and for how it's been going. It's just awesome.
Yeah.
Agreed.
I have a question regarding the farm program.
Sure.
For, again, for people watching, that is an acronym, uh, free and reduced meals. It's not, not, not farms per se. But you, so we're talking about a, a $3.5 million increase to that program. And then you mentioned some other related costs, you know, uh, that in food preparation that go towards that program, but also probably are used during the day for, you know, regular lunches. What, can you put a number on that actual cost in the county for FY? I guess it would be for FY 23 technically. How much that program overall cost the Carroll County Public School System?
So I think that's somewhat captured in the, um, briefing there, that the very last page of your packet for this item is, um, shows what the original budget was at about eight and a half million. Uh, the increase is a three and a half. The total at 12.1 million, um, is the, uh, grand total of our food service program, uh, offset with some revenues that are, um, uh, family, uh, you know, per meal, uh, charges. Uh, that hasn't, uh, been touched or raised in quite a number of years. So that's still a fairly low, uh, portion of the revenue. The majority is the federal reimbursement program. Um, so, you know, I think we see total federal funding there. Something close to $10 million, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, uh, and I don't know if you want to comment some on this. It, it was amazing for me from the other side, um, what she does with food services. Um, almost everything needed for food services comes out of her budget because, um, she's actual, runs it, like, you can't say out of profit, but in, in the positive, it seems like always.
Yeah, so that's Ms. Karen Sarno. I'll give her a shout out, uh, our, our director in food services. And, um, yeah, that's, that's the goal is to try to, to run the whole program within that. She's, uh, made some real, uh, advance there. Food service used to be a bit of a, of a drag on the budget from a, a general fund standpoint. So, uh, being able to capture all those costs and have, uh, a program the way it is and now really reinvesting in the, in the, uh, equipment and so forth is, uh, is, is a good operation. Thank you.
And, and, uh, the public school system's been working with this side of the county, trying to acquire some space, um, trying to buy a building and back and forth discussing because she feels if she had storage for more bulk stuff, she could probably even make the budget a little bit more positive.
Yeah, we're looking at alternatives there. We'll continue to explore that. Um, an opportunity to try to get some bulk purchase, um, you know, side and then do some central warehousing and distribution. Uh, that's something that, uh, that we'll continue to work toward.
Okay.
Motion to approve the operating budget transfer 23 dash 01 for the Board of Education fiscal year 23 operating fund budget.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
We need to, uh, motion all the adjustments or no?
Yeah, might as well.
Individually or? Okay. Motion to approve the, uh, operating budget adjustment 23 dash 01 for the Board of Education fiscal year 23 operating fund budget.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the operating budget adjustment 23 dash 02 for the Board of Education fiscal year 23 operating fund budget.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve the food services budget adjustment 23 dash 01 for the Board of Education fiscal year 23 food services fund budget.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Okay, let's talk about the actual services, RFP 15 tech, F tech, 2 tech, 22, 23.
Morning.
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 Morning. I just want to let y'all know, I was filling in for Maureen today. She had a, a last minute appointment, so I stepped in for.
So we got the better. No, I'm gone.
I don't know about that.
Uh, you're good.
All right. Um, the Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Department of Human Resources received proposals for actuarial services for the following plans. Um, Carroll County Pension and the Carroll County Public Safety Pension, Length of Service Award Program, the Retiree Benefit Trust. An evaluation committee was formed and to conduct technical and financial review of the proposals submitted. The committee evaluated all proposals based on criteria detailed in the proposal. The Evaluation Committee recommends award to Boomer Shine Consulting Group LLC, the highest ranked firm for this project. The estimated annual cost is $66,000. These expenses will be paid from the assets of plans. Boomer Shine has other fixed fees for the duration of the five-year contract.
I can add some more meat on the bone if you'd like. Um, so our current contract with Bolton expires on June 30th of this year. It's a five-year contract. And we've used Bolton as our actuary for those plans for the last 20-plus years. So they've been a longtime partner with us. Um, but what we did was we put out the RFP and we received responses from seven different, uh, firms. And all the proposals were very strong, both the technical piece and the financial piece. Um, but we chose Boomer Shine because there were really two things that distinguished them from the other candidates. Uh, for one, their, um, their response time, their turnaround time is promised to be much quicker than it had been with Bolton, especially over the last couple of years. Uh, just to provide an example, with our pension plans, we receive an actuarial evaluation every year. And with Bolton, we usually receive those reports in late December, early January. Um, and it seemed to be getting pushed back with each passing year. But Boomer Shine has pledged that they would get, get the reports to us by late October or November. So that's definitely an advantage. The other thing too is Bolton, like with all actuarial firms, they provide individual calculations. So when we have an employee that's about to retire or is already retired and we're about to turn their pension on, usually Bolton would take a couple of weeks to provide me with those calculations. But Boomer Shine has pledged again about a one-week turnaround. So just in general, the turnaround time is, is, is much better with Boomer Shine. Um, and the other thing that really distinguished them from the others is that they, I mean, Boomer Shine, they, they've been around for 30 years. They have a lot of clients in the state of Maryland. Um, they're prevalent in 15 different states. And their cost was definitely much less than the other candidates. And the cost is actually fixed for the entire five-year contract. And that's something we didn't see with the other candidates. The other candidates typically had a 2% or a 3% inflator, but, um, Boomer Shine's cost is fixed for the entire five-year duration of the contract.
Just one of the other things that I'd add is in years past, we have not been providing benefit statements to our employees, our active employees with regards to their pension and what that looks like years out and, and what they could, you know, potentially expect. That is one piece that we tied into the RFP, important for all of the responders to give us some information on. Uh, Boomer Shine responded to that. They are including those benefit statements in the cost that they gave us. And there's some other options that we can look at down the road, whether it be, um, projections that an employee can go online and make themselves. So a lot of different things that, that we're looking at enhancing the experience for employees with regards to understanding their pension better, even as far as, um, educational sessions or seminars where Boomer Shine would partner with, you know, other oper- social security or, or things like that, that we can help educate employees better with regards to that benefit because it is a large cost. Employees, you know, contribute 5% of their pay to it as far as regular commissioner employees. Um, so it is important for them to understand what they're getting out of that and, and how important that is as part of their total compensation package, so.
I wanted so much to ask you some hard questions, but I think you guys covered it so well, I can't do it.
You know, I, I felt the same way. I'm like, I'm like, okay, stop talking so I can ask. But you, you covered it, so.
We, we actually interviewed, um, two gentlemen from Boomer Shine last week. They would serve as our primary contacts and we were very impressed by, um, by their presentation and by their responses to our questions, so.
In addition to Warner and I, Jenny was on the evaluation committee, so.
I'll tell you personally, I, I appreciate the confidence that you are sharing with this contract. I mean, it's important. And, uh, yeah, um, you did obvious, to all of us, I believe, the due diligence in working through this and then sharing that confidence. So, um, I'll move the Board of Commissioners award of contract for actual services to Boomer Shine Consulting Group LLC.
Second.
I got a motion. I got a couple of seconds, I think. I got a motion, I got a couple seconds, I think.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you get a couple more seconds, you'll end up with a minute.
Getting punny in here this morning.
Let's move on to. Let's move on to FY twenty-four Maryland facade improvement program grant from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, everybody.
On this beautiful Thursday, we're finally getting some much-needed rain.
Absolutely.
Amen.
So we're here today for a couple grant opportunities to discuss with you all. First up, we will be talking about grant opportunity for facade improvements in the Finksburg corridor. Ms. Tiffany Fawcett will be leading the discussion and be able to answer any questions that you have.
Good morning. I also have with me today the President of the Finksburg Planning and Citizens Council, Skip Boils as well.
Morning.
Morning.
As Director Hein had said, this is for the approval to apply for a FY twenty-four Maryland facade improvement program, the MFIP grant. It is administered through the Department of Planning with the project lead on that being Claire Stewart. The Maryland facade improvement program grant is offered to designated sustainable communities. The, the capital budget for the program is sixty-five thousand, five hundred, seventy-one dollars. The state grant request is forty-eight thousand, participant match, twelve thousand, and county in-kind match, five thousand, five hundred, seventy-one dollars. The county has been administering the Finksburg facade improvement program since April first, twenty-twenty-two, with funding from Maryland DHCD's FY twenty-two Community Legacy Program. The state funding of forty-eight thousand, if awarded, will be used to fund up to eighty percent of the total cost of projects for the facade and sign improvements and to make other visually impactful exterior improvements in return for the property or business owners' twenty percent or greater investment. The program will be offered on a rolling basis for two years if funding is available. On this map here, eligible applicants, there we go, eligible applicants are highlighted in transparent green and outlined in yellow. Those are developed commercial and industrial zoned properties that front Maryland one-forty or adjacent to a property that fronts one-forty and are in the designated sustainable community. On top of the matching grant, we can also incentivize property owners to make improvements by allowing them to pair the county's gateway renovation tax credit with this program. Planning would continue to administer the Finksburg facade improvement program and we've estimated a little under six thousand dollars in kind contribution for staff time to administer the project if spread out over six applications. A survey was released for public input in March twenty-twenty-one to eligible property owners asking for their interest in the program of this type. We received about a twenty percent response rate. All respondents did show interest in making improvements and seeing a program like this in their community. With Commissioner approval, we did apply for and were awarded the grant funds in December twenty-twenty-one and we started accepting applications April of last year. Original expressed interest along with a recent uptick in interest by business and property owners, including two applications currently in review process, has spurred us to come before you to request approval to apply for state grant funding for the program again. And lastly, we would like to thank the Finksburg Planning and Citizens Council for their participation in this effort. Think PAC has worked beside us the last couple of years while drafting and revising the guidelines, applying for the grant, reviewing applications and marketing and the opportunities and benefits of the program to the community. And they have been nothing but supportive through the process of implementing the Sustainable Communities Action Plan. And if you allow, Skip Boils, President of Think PAC is here and if you'd like to say anything.
The Finksburg Planning and Citizens Council, I think as everybody understands and knows, is an all-volunteer organization. It's been in existence about twenty-two years now, made up of residents and some business members within the community. As a gateway coming into Carroll County, we, those of us that live in the area take a great deal of pride in the area as well and have done everything that we can think of to try to help and enhance and improve the overall appearance of that gateway corridor. These programs that Tiffany's speaking about certainly take a huge step in that direction. And recently, we've been able to develop a bit of momentum now with some interest coming from businesses along the corridor. And we have a very strong belief that once you start this program and they begin to see some results, that others will come on board. Some of the volunteers have gone door-to-door along with representatives from county planning to try to stimulate some interest and will continue to do that as well because it is, it is a well-received program. Face-to-face, individuals always say, "It's a wonderful program. How can you not participate in a program that's going to reward you with an eighty percent coverage of whatever it is you're going to do to enhance the appearance of your building, which hopefully will enhance the value of their business?" And I think most people see it that way. So we certainly appreciate your consideration in this review and any support that the county is willing to provide going forward. Thank you.
Okay. Were there any questions on this? Just a quick comment. I think, like we talked about veterans, it, it seemed like businesses were reluctant to take advantage of it, but you've got some momentum now. Some have done it, some are talking about it, so it's, it's moving in a positive way. So good luck. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I was the economic developer in Rondell County back in twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen, and we had this facade improvement program. And there was reluctance, you know, but just like you said, once we started moving forward with it, people said, "Oh, man, that's pretty cool looking, a brand-new awning and, you know, in small shops." I think it was in Arnold and Glen Burnie or some of the area, well, definitely Brooklyn was one of the challenging areas that we focused on. Twenty percent response rate is low. I mean, some people say it's high, higher than ten percent, but it's still low. Are you using different techniques, different approaches to get more? Or are you focusing on that twenty percent, getting this put in place and let that, that tell a large part of the story? You know? It's, you know where I'm coming from?
That's a great question. The, that was actually the survey done in twenty-twenty-one, so it would be Skip was actually here and I was not at that time for how that was handled. Do you remember?
We, we circulated the questionnaire to all of the, with help from the county, we got a address list and circulated the questionnaire and collected through, I think also the county, the responses that came back. With those responses, then, those people that expressed interest, all the respondees expressed an interest, we then went to those locations and spoke with them directly. And as, as I mentioned before, face-to-face, everyone is in agreement that it's a wonderful program and it's something that they think they should do. There's some discussion about, well, I just improved my building last year, do I get credit or can I get credit for money that I've already spent? Of course, you can't. You've got to do something new in order to participate in a program. Recently, there was an event held at Bellicamo's that was a luncheon event and invited all of the businesses from the area. And we had good turnout, I would say, not great turnout, but good turnout. People that came and with representatives from economic development in addition to planning. The entire program was described once again. Maps were shown of the treated area where you could actually participate in the program, how it actually works and the benefits of participating along with the accomplishments of, of one business that's already participated and the applications that are coming forward now from others. So with all of that in play, I, I'm not sure that that's a good answer to your question, but we try to take, trigger more than just those respondents. And again, like I've said, members of the Finksburg Planning and Citizens Council have actually gone throughout the community, knocking on the doors of the businesses to try to stimulate some interest, giving out the cards that have been produced by the county that quickly states what the program is about and how to, how to participate and apply.
Now, you definitely answered the question. It's challenging, complex to get the word out there to everyone. And the expectation that you think you're going to is you're fooling yourself. But it doesn't slow you down from keep going, you know? And this approach is tell two friends to tell two friends type of approach. Is this a one-time deal or if this shows its value, will you be able to reapply? And I'm not saying you, but us from the county.
Yes. We can, we can continue to reapply.
Annually or?
We can do it annually.
Okay.
Yes, although the funds are look, are hoped to be spent within two years and they do, we do quarterly and then yearly reports on that. So they're looking to have it spent within a couple of years, but it is that you can reapply. So we actually were awarded last year, we could have reapplied even last year to, for this year, but.
Besides Finksburg, what other areas within the county have we applied for, for facade improvements?
Ourselves, we can't apply for any others because we don't have another sustainable community designation in the, in the county. All of the municipalities do have our sustainable communities or they have a sustainable community designations and they have applied for facade improvement programs within those municipalities. I don't know how many in particular.
So Aldersburg doesn't have that opportunity?
They do not, not as, as of yet.
Are there other tools available maybe within DHCD?
We can certainly look at that.
Yeah. Okay. Because I mean, there's, in military intelligence, we say ungoverned space, but that's not what this is. But there are spaces within our community, within our county, that are just not within the municipalities. Aldersburg, Woodbine, you know, lots of them, and have really cool, small businesses. And if we have tools possibly to enhance them, you know, that's a good thing. I mean, Finksburg does a great job at this, you know? Gamber, you know, there's others, so, okay. Cool.
Mr. Howard, you want to take this one because it's?
Sure. I move that the Board of County Commissioners approve the submission and acceptance of the fiscal year twenty-four Maryland facade improvement program grant. Second. I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the Finksburg group, unrelated to this, Carroll County, particularly Public Works, has been looking at the county roads that are going to be affected by the two bridge projects and, and working with the state and Baltimore County because some of the roads that people are going to try to take, starting in Baltimore County. If, if your association down there has any thoughts or needs or whatever, please contact us. But, but they, it is in the works and it is being discussed. I know a lot of your community members are concerned about it.
Yes, yes, very much so.
I believe there's a, a meeting happening at the library in September.
Yes.
Yeah, it's already scheduled, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about request approval for grant adjustment and acceptance award Piney Run watershed.
Good morning again.
Good morning again.
You're just going to stay up here for a few more times.
Yeah, that's, that's all good. So the county has been working for a couple of years now on what's called a watershed study for Piney Run reservoir. This, the study is funded through a grant from the Natural Resources Conservation Service. It's a half-million dollar grant. And we are reaching the end of that, that study. The report that's generated from it has been reviewed by the National Headquarters, the federal level of NRCS, and they've got some scope items that they want to have addressed, which will require some additional costs. So because this is a new project to several of you and to many of you, I thought it would take just a couple of minutes to run through it to, to give you some background so you understand what it is we're trying to accomplish with all of this. So again, we're talking about Piney Run reservoir. The reservoir itself was completed in nineteen seventy-four and it had three primary purposes, and that was for flood control, water supply and recreation. The reservoir is created by the Piney Run Dam, which is the largest dam that the county owns. The dam is seventy-three feet tall and six hundred feet long, and it holds back the reservoir, which is two-hundred-and-ninety acres and about one-point-seven billion gallons of water. What's important on this is it gives you some, some terminology related to the reservoir and to the dam, but the primary thing I wanted to point out to you was what we call the principal spillway and the auxiliary spillway. The purposes of those are to convey the water that comes into the reservoir, past the dam and into the, into Piney Run downstream of it. So the principal spillway is what maintains the water level, the permanent water level in the dam. And the picture in the upper right is the, the control structure, so that maintains the water level. Water drops down and that comes through the dam and to the stream. If we have a very severe storm, and, and I'm talking biblical proportions-type storm, because in the, since nineteen seventy-four, we have never had water go through the auxiliary spillway. The closest we came was in nineteen seventy-five with Hurricane Eloise. Water came up into it, but did not flow through it. That auxiliary spillway is designed to convey those very large storms past the dam. So Piney Run Dam is classified by the Maryland Department of the Environment, which is this regulatory agency for all dams in the state. It's classified as what's called a high hazard. And the reason for that, you can see in this image, is that here we have the dam and you can imagine that if that were, were completely full, we would have seventy-three feet of water stacked up behind it. If that were to fail catastrophically, that wave of water would wash down the valley and impact Maryland thirty-two as well as residents and keep going for miles all the way through Howard County. So there is a, there is a risk there, but that's moderated by having very high standards for operating and maintaining the facility, but also has very high design standards and for the safety of it and how it's built. And that's what we're talking about primarily today. But one thing, one very key thing I want everybody to take away from this is from an operation and maintenance perspective, there are no concerns with the dam. There's not an immediate structural issue or anything like that. The dam is inspected every year by representatives from the county, from NRCS and from MDE, and every inspection has indicated that it's in good condition, well-maintained, and there are no immediate safety concerns. So the issue that we're looking to address is from a design perspective. Because of that high risk, the dam and, needs to be able to safely pass the, the largest storm that you could imagine occurring here in our area. And what MDE expressed a couple of years ago was they were concerned that the size of the spillway, the auxiliary spillway, was not large enough to safely pass that, that maximum probable storm that we could encounter. They also expressed concerns that because this is an earthen spillway, that if we did have water going through it, that that could erode and cause a failure of the dam. So there are those two issues that MDE asked us to look at. They required that we evaluate, analyze the dam to determine if, if their fears were founded and if there are issues, that we mitigate those issues by August of twenty-twenty-seven. So the first phase of the work was to do this watershed study, which we applied for grant funding with NRCS. NRCS helped build the dam. They, they built the dam in nineteen seventy-four. And they awarded us the half-million dollar grant. We hired AE Com, an engineering firm, to perform, perform that watershed study. So the watershed study covered a lot of varying components that I'm not going to get into today. But the primary thing related to the spillway capacity is here you can see the numbers related to the storm that we have to analyze. In this region, the largest imaginable storm, which we have to design for, is thirty-nine inches of rain in seventy-two hours. Like I said, that's biblical. Hurricane Eloise was, that's two-point-seven times greater than Hurricane Eloise in nineteen-seventy-five. And what the analysis of the dam shows is that if we were to have that storm, there would be water four feet deep over top of the dam, which is represented in this cross-section here. And if you have water going over top of a dam, that can cause the failure of the dam, which is the concern that MDE has raised. Looking at the cross-section view, here's the auxiliary spillway to the right, and you can see it's not large enough to handle that amount of water. So the solution is to widen the spillway and take the material that we excavate from the widened spillway and put it on top of the dam, raising the dam by three or four feet. So we have a solution that in theory we've come up with to address the capacity issue. The other issue, as I mentioned, is erodability of the auxiliary spillway. This is a picture of another NRCS dam that failed because of the erosion of the auxiliary spillway, and this looks very similar to Piney Run Dam, the same design. So this is what we're trying to avoid. And the relatively simple solution is to put concrete at the downstream end to protect it so that it cannot erode up through the spillway. So bottom line is, where we are now, the study has determined these issues and, and what needs to happen. So in working with MDE, by August of twenty-twenty-seven, we have a deadline to raise the dam and widen the spillway and armor the downstream end of the spillway with concrete. The estimated cost for that for design and construction is eleven million dollars. The estimated cost for that for design and construction is $11 million. Now, as I said, this first phase of work that we're doing, which is the the study, NRCS funded for half a million dollars. Once that's complete, we can apply for another grant for the design and permitting. And NRCS, if we're accepted in that program, will fund 100% of that. That's estimated to be a little over $2 million thereabouts. Once we finish the design and permitting, we can then apply for a third grant for the construction. And NRCS, if we're accepted, will cover 65% of the construction cost. So that's why we're going through this long process with NRCS. Now, the reason why we're here today, as I said, we're just about wrapped up with this, we know what we need to do and so on. We just need the National NRCS to approve the the study. They've indicated a couple of additional items that they want to have addressed. And I'll point out the the primary one to you all. This is a picture of the downstream end of the auxiliary spillway. And inside this yellow box, you can see this this rectangle, which I've blown up here. That is the foundation of an old house. Our project will not impact that that old foundation, but NRCS has indicated that it may be a cultural resource of concern. So they want to know what what is it? Did George Washington sleep there, that sort of thing? Do we need to protect it? So as part of the initial watershed study, we did what's called a Phase One archaeological study. That did not find anything conclusive that it's something that needs to be protected. But NRCS is requiring us to do a Phase Two archaeological study. That the cost of that is over $100,000 and was not in the scope of the original project. So that's the primary reason why we're coming back to you all is for a contract extension of the project with NRCS. And a request for additional funding from NRCS to pay for these requirements that NRCS is putting on us for the project. So in total, we're requesting, we're going to request an additional $170,000 of NRCS. And then and a one-year extension. Hopefully that all goes through smoothly, we wrap up this report and we can move on to the design and permitting of the project. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. And I am remiss in saying that I'm joined here by Janet O'Meara, Bureau Chief of Resource Management.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Is there anything else you wanted to add before?
No, I think Chris covered everything, you know, very well. Some of the other tasks that they will be doing, I guess, is a wetland delineation. They've also asked for a joint permit application to MDE and the Army Corps and additional rare and threatened endangered species coordination. And then $25,000 of that request is to cover administrative costs here at the county.
Yes, of the original half million dollar grant, $450,000 went to was dedicated to AECOM for consulting services. $50,000 was set aside for administrative costs for the county. And so in this additional request, the consultant services were estimated at 145,000. And we're putting in a request for an additional $25,000 in administrative costs.
Doing the work is not going to shut down the trail over the dam.
No.
Okay.
And Chris, what what is involved in the the Phase Two? I mean, is it stratigraphic trenching? Is it like a larger grid excavation or is it?
It's actually, I'll come back to your question. I just want to make sure I didn't answer too quickly for you, Commissioner. When you say the work, I assume that you were talking about the archaeological work at the.
Correct.
Okay, no, that will not affect anything. When we do the big project.
That's a different story.
Yes, okay, I just want to make sure I didn't miss answer for you. Commissioner Glaudy, yes, the I'm not an archaeologist, so I don't know all of the the differences in the Phase One versus Phase Two. But my understanding is it's primarily in the amount of of test pits and studies that you do. I think we we may have done three or four test pits out there as part of the Phase One study. Now there will be upwards of 30 test pits. And those are similar to if you watch the History Channel type archaeological digs, they go out and create a grid and they they dig down and categorize all of the artifacts that they find. Send them off to be analyzed to determine age and and provenance, as it were, and and so on.
That's awesome. And so anything they find, does that come back to the county or do they keep that locked away somewhere where the public can't see it?
Now, what's interesting is is the fundamental question I had for them was what is going to be the result of this study? Like if they determine that this is a cultural resource that needs to be protected, what do we need to do? And early on, there was some some talk about we would have to revise the design of the dam to to avoid this. Thankfully, the more recent conversations have been that if it is determined that this is a cultural resource that needs to be protected, we will simply move it. And so that would probably be part of the cost of the construction cost long term. That the county would have to bear part of that cost because the grant from NRCS would cover 65% of it. But that seems to be the 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 remedy if it is determined to be a cultural resource. If the archaeological study says it's not, that George Washington did not sleep there or however, then it will be left as is and and we will not have to address it.
And I was going to ask too, I mean, do they have any, I mean, I guess they have to have some sense that there might be something there. I mean, even going back to like land records or whatever, I mean, they I I I mean, have they, do you know if they've done that? They've gone back into land records and to to the archives to see if they can determine who owned it and.
Yes, some level of that was done as part of the Phase One. There is a much more in-depth research component in the Phase Two to try and determine whose house it was and so on. That preliminary, that Phase One level of research was not able to determine who owned it.
Gotcha. I mean, this is, I mean, to me, this is absolutely fascinating. I mean, not just because it's part of our county's history, but because it's history here with us.
Yes.
So if you can keep us updated on that, even if we don't find anything, I mean, it'd be fascinating to to know that this kind of stuff is going on in our county.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
And just a quick fun fact for the day, since you did mention George Washington, he was in Tawny Town at the Adam Good Tavern in July 1st and 2nd of 1791. So hopefully he stayed on that side of the county. We don't have to worry about that side, so.
He slept around.
Got a couple of questions. This is interesting. Can can the the principal spillway and the amount of water it can handle, can that be adjusted in preparation for a very heavy storm rain?
So, yes and no. So the the principal spillway and the riser structure, no, you can't make any adjustments on that. But there is what we call the lake drain. There is a pipe that connects to that's along the bottom of the of the reservoir that connects to that riser structure that's controlled by a valve that's on top of the the structure. In advance of a very large storm event, we could go out and open that drain and start and lower the water level lower than what the principal structure controls it at. So in anticipation of that large event, we could lower the reservoir by a couple of feet to create additional capacity. And that has happened in the past, we have done that in the past when a hurricane is coming our way.
I think that would be obviously, I mean, we'd be crazy not to do that, right? So when when Hurricane Kenny is bearing down on Carroll County with 39 inches of rain or whatever.
Yes.
The the other question I have is the that the site you mentioned, I mean, I guess this, I guess this is a rhetorical question. I mean, we don't have any resources in the county to tell us what this is. I mean, and I know we've got a lot of, you know, we've got historical societies. I I think it might be in our best interest to take some effort to try to figure out what this is. I know that's not what your department does, but there's got to be some resources available for somebody to.
And that is.
Out, right?
Yeah, and that is part of the scope of the Phase Two assessment is is doing research, reaching out to those folks that that have these kind of historic documents and trying to ascertain who owned that house, where was it significant and and so on.
But 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 can't we do that in the, we can do that as a county, though, right? We mean, we're talking about contracting out that work. I mean, we don't have resources here in the county for somebody to, we don't have anybody here.
Not not Carroll County government does not know. I mean, as you say, maybe the historical society or something and and.
I mean, I know that property butts up against John Buck's farm. I know that, you know. But, I mean, I don't know if that's his property or it may be, I mean, and he's.
Currently, it's county's county property.
It's county property, but I'm saying that county property may border his farm. So like you said, at one time, it may have been his farm, I I don't know.
Ironically, I lived here at one point and we backed up the Piney Run, but I was a little further north. So nobody in the county can spend any time on this, trying to figure out what that is, okay? And thirdly, we, I know we set aside some money for the Piney Run Dam in FY24 budget. So, I mean, are we asking for a dip into general fund for this?
No, 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 this is all grant funds.
Okay.
This is a grant that we're looking for.
But.
So NRCS, they define the requirements of the watershed study and what it is that we have to do to complete that. It's a federal, federal guidelines. From our perspective, we've done everything that we feel is necessary for the study and we're ready to move on. But we can't until NRCS accepts the final report. And they've said, you have to do this additional work, which is said, great, as long as you pay for it. If they were saying we had to pay for it, we would be having a very different discussion about this.
And then, but then on a page 11 where we're talking about the total cost, and I know we're getting ahead of ourselves. I cannot recall exactly how much money we set aside in the FY24 budget for this, but does anybody recall? I think it was, was it eight, was it five?
Well, it started off as 11 million, it was in the capital budget, knowing that this was the the and that's for the the repairs or changes, the modifications, I guess is the right word, to the dam.
Okay.
So we, I'm sorry.
I don't remember what the ultimate ended up to be.
Yes, so our, and I hate to use the word hope, but what we anticipate is requesting these funds from NRCS. But they are not obligated to us yet. So our thought was a better course of action was to plan for the the potential for having to spend this money with the anticipation that we would be requesting the grant funding from NRCS and hopefully be successful in in obtaining it, but plan for the worst.
So that was the reason for the 11 million.
Chris, after the after the height of tick season, I'd like to go see this in person.
Absolutely, happy to take you out.
The dam, the dam is really cold, you see.
It's a walking path.
Oh, I meant the foundations, the the.
Yeah, but I mean, that's right off of the walking path.
Oh, cool.
The dam, so.
Cool.
Unfortunately, the trail stops. When you get over the path, over the dam, it doesn't go all the way around the reservoir. It's like just downright stops and you have to go up the street and it it leads you out to Obreck.
Cool.
But, yeah.
Motion to approve the request to the Natural Resources Conservation Service for a time extension and funding increase of $170,000 as well as acceptance of award for the Piney Run watershed plan.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Is there any further discussion on this? See in here, none all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's now talk about Rural Legacy Program option, purchase the John and Kathy Kugel property.
I'm going to bounce seats again.
Musical chairs.
Musical chairs.
All good.
Company exercise.
See me back there.
Exercise.
All right. Okay. Let's see here, I do this every time.
So yes, again, we're we're here for a couple of Mag Preservation projects and JP Smith, program manager, will lead you through the discussion.
JP, it's easiest if you go to the bottom right corner.
Yeah, bottom right, isn't it, go over a little bit. Oh, up, right there, yes, just look on that.
Thanks, I appreciate it. I don't know why it looks different than it does in my office. I just went through this on a little thumb drive to make sure it was there. All right, good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Appreciate you guys and we're here today to have a couple of final approvals, one through the Rural Legacy Plan, Rural Legacy Program and one for the Carroll County Program. We currently just went over the 78,000 acre milestone. So we are currently at 78,047 acres. So and we have plenty of farms that are that are in the process and this number will be growing quickly. All right, the Rural Legacy Program is 100% funded by a state grant from the Department of Natural Resources. We have two Rural Legacy areas, the Little Pipe Creek Rural Legacy Area and the Patapsco Rural Legacy Area. We use a points-based appraisal to determine the fair market value of these properties. And there are no soil qualifications for a Rural Legacy Program. And we can do small or large properties with the Rural Legacy Program. Today, we are looking for final approval for the John and Kathy Kugel property. This is for the Upper Patapsco Rural Legacy Program area. Their property is located at 2070 Cape Horn Road in Hampstead, 16.3 acres, and we will be retiring three lot rights. The fair market value of the land was $77,828. And 70% of that value will be $54,479.92, which will be the cost coming from the grant. This is where the farm is located or the property is located, right off of Cape Horn Road. And this is how the farm fits into other preserved properties in the area. We have plenty of preservation possible in that area as well. The picture of the landscape. So again, we're requesting final approval for John and Kathy Kugel at 2070 Cape Horn Road, 16.3 acres at a cost of $54,479.92, which is 100% grant funded by the Department of Natural Resources. Okay. Any questions on this discussion? Kenny, you want to take this one?
I move the Board of Commissioners exercise the option to purchase a Rural Legacy Program conservation easement on the John and Kathy Kugel property in the amount of $54,479.92.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a couple of seconds and discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now let's talk about the Charles Ireland and Irma Ireland property. Thank you, Commissioners. We're here for to request final approval for a Carroll County applicant, Charles Ireland and Irma Ireland. Their farm is located at 632 Silver Run Valley Road in Westminster, 115.2 acres. This farm is in District One. We will be retiring 18 lot rights on this property. The fair market value is estimated at $1,015,396. The cost to the county for this easement will be $710,777.72.
Seven?
This is where the farm.
Two or 12, the briefing paper says 12 cents.
Let me go back. 72 cents? Let's get the 72 approved and if it's if it's 12, we save 60 cents. So I apologize for that.
That's just, don't know which is which.
Okay.
Go ahead, sorry.
Thank you. This is where the farm is located, north and south of Silver Run Valley Road. It's several parcels that will be consolidated. Here's where Mr. and Mrs. Ireland's farm fits in with other preserved properties in the area. This middle area of Carroll County is, we're getting a lot of action in this area recently.
Awesome.
Some photos provided by the landowner. Another picture from Silver Run Valley Road. Once again, we're asking for final approval for Charles and Irma Ireland property at 632 Silver Run Valley Road in Westminster, 115 acres, located in District One. We're retiring 18 lot rights at a cost of $710,777.
72 cents.
72 cents.
Or 12.
Just in case. We got it two different.
I'll throw the 60 cents in if me being.
There you go. We'll take care of it.
Land investment.
Yes, exactly.
Motion to exercise an option to purchase an easement on the Charles L. Ireland and Emma V. Ireland property in the amount of $710,777.72.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. One is, does this now bring us up to 78,200 acres? Well, these have not settled yet. Okay. And they they will be settling shortly. So hopefully the next time we come, we can report more acres. But they're they're definitely will be going up. I mean, we have other things settling in between or it just depends on when they settle. Then the other is, I don't know if I talked to you directly, I know I talked to Chris about District Five. There are properties down there that could be eligible just because of the property itself. Yes, sir. Outside of restrictions of, there's no growth there, but just the property itself. If you can look at some of those, if there's interest, I'd be interested to either follow up with that by getting those properties.
up with that by getting those properties outside, out of the designated growth areas and then moving forward or whatever, you know, steps would be feasible, you know.
Sure.
I just, I, I think there's value in, in, in looking into this. So, okay.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay.
No problem.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Great job. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good marathon, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about purchasing some body armor for the Carroll County Sheriff's Office by our newest director. And that is Director of Department of Public Safety, Ms. Valerie Hawkins. Congratulations.
Congratulations and good morning.
So.
Thank you.
Okay.
Watch what you wish for, right?
She just got it, so.
Taking that word acting out of the vocabulary. Okay.
All right, good morning again.
Good morning.
All right. The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Department of Public Safety Emergency Management requests your approval to purchase body armor vests for the Carroll County Sheriff's Office from Lawman Supply in the amount of $68,415.36. This body armor is being purchased through a Prince George's County contract, which was competitively bid. Lawman Supply discount is 40%, 47% off retail price. This purchase is proposed to be made using funding from the fiscal year 2020, 2021, and 2022 Urban Area Security Initiative grants. No additional funds should be required.
Is it the same vests that are currently being used in the sheriff's department?
So, good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
These are not for patrol. So they're issued ongoing vests that they wear daily through our regular budget and they're on a replacement schedule. These are, I guess, we'd say more of a specialty vest for certain units that need a different type of vest than the, the traditional vest that the deputies wear every day. So the last time they were replaced through UFC was in 2018. So they're due to be replaced. They're on a similar five-year schedule, but it's a handful of them. It's not for the entire office. It's for specialized units. So we're up at that point where it's time to replace them again.
What do you do with the old vests?
Um, it depends. They may use them for training if they have anybody else come on, but not wear them out. Keep them, things like that.
Yep.
They, they do have an expiration date.
Yeah. Yep. Okay.
Motion to approve the purchase of body armor vests to Lawman Supply in the amount of $68,415.36.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. Is there a discussion? Seen here, none all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Let's request the acceptance of Maryland 911 Board funding for next-gen 911, continued improvements.
All right, commissioners, this motion, or excuse me, not this motion, this, this item and the next item are related. They go together. So the Maryland 911 Board recently awarded funding to Carroll County for the proposed implementation of some network enhancements that are designed to increase the resiliency of our next-gen 911 platform and the call routing capabilities that exist within our system. So this project is intended to provide dual network connections to both the primary and alternate public safety answering points or PSAPs for the county. So this first motion that we're requesting you to make is to request to accept the 911 Board funding. And then the next item is the actual request to expend the funds.
Accepting the, so I see the first, you know, action, but there's not a dollar associated with the acceptance of the proposed funding. So how much are we, I, I expect, but this is now an assumption, that we are accepting the proposed funding of $281,384.90.
That's correct, Commissioner, and that's simply an oversight in the, in the briefing paper.
Okay. So.
So the.
I move the county accept the proposed funding of $281,384.90 from the Maryland 911 Board, as well as authorize the Director of Public Safety to execute the PSAP dual circuits agreement with Motorola Solutions.
Second.
Okay. I got a motion, I have a second. Is there any discussion on this? Seen here, none all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Now let's see how we're gonna spend it.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Department of Public Safety requests your approval to have Motorola Solutions add one additional circuit to both the primary and alternate public safety answering point sites. This design change will augment the county's 911 call routing resilience. The cost is $281,384.90. This project will be paid from Grant Project 3620-9, approved by the Maryland 911 Board, and no additional fund should be necessary.
So commissioners, the next generation 911 platform itself is very resilient. Moving from an analog system, as was mentioned in, well, Mr. Christensen mentioned, to the digital or Internet Protocol IP-based platform increased the resiliency of our system and also created some redundancy in it. But there's always opportunities for improvement. This is a result of regular and ongoing evaluation by Motorola Solutions and the Department of Public Safety. So it's simply an opportunity for improving the resiliency of the call routing between our Ethernet provider, which is Motorola Solutions, and our call centers themselves.
Motion to approve the next-gen 911 connectivity improvements to Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $281,384.90.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion on this? Seen here, none all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about Public Safety Training Center network cabling and security work. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Department of Technology Services requests your approval to award the installation of card access control wireless access points, network cabling, and security cameras at the Public Safety Training Center to Skyline Technology Solutions in the amount of $85,800.56. This equipment and service are being purchased via a county competitively bid contract, which Skyline was then awarded a term contract. This amount is approved in the fiscal year 23 budget and no additional fund should be required.
So, good morning, commissioners. The, the existing network infrastructure and access control of the Public Safety Training Center had historically been installed and maintained by CC Visa. With the Fire EMS department now, you know, using that facility, we are, we need to expand the county's network infrastructure to that site fully so they can function throughout that site. So this project will, you know, convert the existing card access system to the county's Genetec system, as well as upgrade all the network infrastructure to support county Wi-Fi, county computers being able to connect to, to that network. So, and that would, and this particular request for this project is for the administration building and the apparatus building. There are two other buildings at that site, but they are not part of the scope of this particular project yet.
Okay. Any questions? Any? Okay.
Motion to approve the network and physical security work purchased to Skyline Technology Solutions in the amount of $85,800.56.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion or any discussion? Seen here, none all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gentlemen. Okay, stay in local Fiscal Recovery Fund, FRF, request.
Like a party just walked in.
Perfect time.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Morning.
Debbie Staniford, Grants Office, here with Brian Bokey, Director of Public Works, Celine Steckel, Director of Citizen Services. We are here this morning to discuss the family shelter relocation and renovation project, which is partially, partially funded through the FRF grant. I can't believe I'm out of breath from just walking down the hall. It's bad. I usually have a minute to catch my breath. But as you'll recall from our presentation in May, the FRF was forward funded and we are earning interest on those dollars. To date, the board has used interest income for cost overruns for approved FRF projects. And as you can see from the briefing paper, the design costs for this project came in slightly higher than anticipated. And with the addition of the 24/7 congregate shelter in this facility, the HVAC may need to be reconfigured. So we are asking for funding to be moved from our accumulated unallocated interest to this project. But to start, we would like to give you just a brief look at this project, and I'll let Celine take it from here.
Okay. And I know you all recall that we were before you back in May for the full FRF update on May 11th. And when we were here, we did allude to the fact that we wanted to come back before you, once we had more information about the final cost estimates for some of the design pieces. And that's why we're back here before you today. But I do know that some of you were not privy to the presentation before, as you just started this year on the board. And I wanted to give you an overview of some of the information we shared. And I believe that pictures say a thousand words, and that's what we're gonna show you today, about our current state of the family shelter and then our potential and the movement over to the Cove location, where we plan to go with this. So. The current Carroll County family shelter is at 10 Distillery Drive. It's on the fourth floor of a multi, multi-human service agency building. There are safety concerns with where it is located. There are ADA compliance issues. There's inadequate space for the families that are located there. It is truly not a family, a family-friendly environment as far as there's no green space located there for the families, for the children. And we, we see that on a daily basis. There's a lot of movement in the parking lot with the children and, and in the, in the paved locations as well. This family shelter has served 306 adults and 243 children over the last four years. And it does typically operate with a waitlist. This picture shows two places within the family shelter. You see the outside area with the strollers and the bicycles. They have to be taken up the elevator when the children want to use them and back down. So it's not an ideal location for that. And then also there's ductwork that hangs into the play and congregate locations in the shelter as well. The bedrooms also have ductwork that goes through them, as you can see on the picture here on the left. And then also there's only partial walls in the family shelter as far as the bedrooms. So during COVID, this was an issue and continues to be. It's difficult to contain germs. It's also difficult when you have young children or infants that are in shelter, because the noise obviously carries throughout. The bathroom facilities for up to seven families can include up to 23 to 27 individuals that will, will be staying in shelter at one time. We have two bathrooms, and then one tub and one shower stall. So just imagine that's kind of the equivalent of two full bathrooms for 20, 27 people potentially in a 24-hour facility. It's, it's not adequate. We also have kitchen and laundry for up to seven families, and you see pictures of the facilities there for that. So we acquired the Cove in 2021, which is on three acres of flat land. It's a one-story building, approximately 16,000 square feet of the building. There's 45 parking spaces there on the property. The drop-off, there's a drop-off loop with a canopy in the front of the building. There's also a rear open space. There's rear doors that enter into a beautiful open green space that could be a community garden, additional play area. And there's also outdoor dining areas and gathering space that exists immediately outside that back door from a kitchen. This property is also an ideal space because it's adjacent to existing, existing shelters. So the night-by-night and the adult-only shelter are also on the same campus. And it's also adjacent to the Westminster Senior Center, which offers opportunities for us to have intergenerational programming, as well as additional parking potential if we wanted to develop additional parking spaces on the other side. So this is what we've, this is the Stoner Avenue side of the Cove, as you can see it. A lot of green space. I love, I love that this is there, especially in the summers, because as you know, the kids are out of school in the summer, which creates a lot of time for the youth to be in our shelters or around the shelters.
Can I ask really, I apologize, what does Cove stand for?
I was getting that.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to.
That's great. I'm glad you prompted me. It's like, it's like we planned this. It's the Center for Opportunity, Value, and Empowerment.
Center for Opportunity, Value, and Empowerment.
Empowerment.
Thank you.
And just, just if the, pick this PowerPoint is in your binder, it just was put, misfiled under the next item, under DPW item, the first DPW item. So if you wanted to follow along in your book, just not in the right section. Sorry.
Thank you.
You're fine. So the other piece of the Cove is it offers additional space. As you know, we have moved some of our aging staff offices into the office area of the Cove. It also has an area that we're going to be renovating that can be a beautiful conference room for any, any other agencies across the county to utilize as well. It also already has a built-in kitchen, which would be part of the family shelter side of the property, which we just need to do minor renovations to, to improve that area. So the goals for the county office space, as I said, are the staff offices and the conference space. And then the goals for the family shelter are that we would have private bedrooms for eight to 10 families that would be flexible enough to serve larger families if needed. We also would have space to serve homeless youth. It would be ADA compliant with bathrooms and tubs, enough of them that really would, would be able to accommodate everyone in a comfortable way. Laundry facilities for multifamily use, kitchen with multiple food prep areas, space for computer, computers and tutors, fencing for privacy and security, and then also outdoor space for play areas and gardening. I do want to say that the family shelter has operated at Distillery for over 30 years. And obviously, the, the space at one time was, was great if we didn't have a family shelter, but we are at a wonderful, we have a wonderful opportunity now to, to move into this enhanced space, which will be much more accommodating for folks. So. Did you have any questions about either, either property?
What's the, what's the timeline with the Cove for families and individuals being able to move in over there?
It really depends on how fast we move on design. We were, and we have applied for our first grant, which was the state shelter grant. I don't know if this was under this board or the previous board. We were awarded a conditional letter of intent for $2 million of the renovation cost. So right now, we're asking them to defer that until 2025. So if, at the very earliest, we could start construction in January of '26 at this point. We have a couple of other grants that we need to apply for, but we need design complete before we do those applications.
Okay.
So if we started construction in 20, January '26, maybe by the end of '26, we would be able to occupy the shelter.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're estimating about 13 months for construction. And that's in parallel to the work in the conference room and some upgrades to the office and the site improvements, some paving, ADA work, sidewalk work.
And the amount that you're requesting is coming out of unallocated income.
Interest income.
Interest income. I apologize.
So right now, we have a little bit more than this, but I did the briefing paper and then they posted another, another interest, monthly interest payment to this project. But right at the time of the briefing paper, we had unallocated $686,336 available to use.
And you're comfortable with the amount being taken out of this? You're comfortable, you still have enough flexibility to do other things if an emergency comes up or?
Yes. And we are earning about $130,000 a month right now in interest. So I do think that, given the projects, given that we are only using the interest income for existing projects, I think that we will be in good shape.
Motion to direct, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Did you want to make the motion?
I just had a quick question. I apologize. What was that total again? Was 686,000?
686,336. And that is also on your briefing paper, under the budget table.
Perfect, thank you.
Is what was currently unallocated. We had allocated about, I think. We had allocated about, I think, 250 or so thousand to the, one of the broadband county broadband projects to add the Hat Baker Firearms Facility and the Linton Tower to run broadband connections to those two. That's the only use of the interest income to date, other than this request.
Commissioner Gordon, did you want to make the motion?
I can if you want. I move the Board of County Commissioners' direct staff to add 112,898 in the FRF interest income to the family shelter design project.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Celine, just, I gave you a shout out there in Prairie Carroll regarding the veterans programs, you know, Eugene, Bobby, Rick, the whole VSO structure. I appreciate it personally for my, for me and my family. But I was highlighting the importance of and in supposed to or. You know, it's a and structure in our community. You know, let's put these organizations together and instead of being exclusive. So I just appreciate your efforts in doing that with the Veterans Advisory Council and everything else. So, okay. Take that back to your team.
Well, do you?
I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's talk about, just did that one. Architectural engineering design for family shelter. Didn't we just do that?
Just got money for it. Now we have to spend it.
Oh, now we gotta spend it. Oh, I see.
Same kind of things.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, I'm here for the long haul now. The Office of Procurement in Cooperation with the Bureau of Building Construction received proposals for the architectural and engineering design services for the family shelter space located at 115 Stoner Avenue in Westminster. This was a two-step process whereby the county received 13 statements of qualification and has shortlisted the top three highest-ranked firms. After responding to the full request for proposals, the highest-ranked firm was Murphy and Dittenhafer Architects. The cost is $337,898. Per your prior approval monies have now been appropriated within the fiscal year '23 budget for this project.
And we'll be happy to answer any questions on the qualifications or scope of work for
Any questions? Any? Okay.
I move that the Board of Commissioners award the contract for the architectural and engineering design services for the family shelter space to Murphy and Dittenhafer Architects at the cost of $337,898.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second and discussion on this. Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's talk about Kohler Diesel Generator.
Well, now you're running the marathon.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, he's here for the rest.
I'm here for the rest of it.
Uh, yeah, you are.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The Office of Procurement in Cooperation with the Bureau of Facilities requests your approval to award the purchase and installation of one Kohler Diesel Generator, Model 40RE OZK and 40-kilowatt transfer switch to Fidelity Power Systems in the amount of $56,172. This unit will be installed at the Cherry Town Tower on Cherry Town Road, voting District One. Kohler Power Systems was awarded a competitively bid contract through Sourcewell, which Fidelity is an authorized dealer. This amount is approved in the fiscal year '23 budget and no additional funds should be required.
All right, Commissioners, this tower site plays an important role for our communication infrastructure throughout the county. Due to the importance of the county operation, it's critical that this generator replacement scheduled is followed. This replacement does fall within our capital project plan for the next eight years out. So I'm here to answer any questions you have regarding this generator replacement, if
Any questions, any issues? Okay.
Motion to approve the purchase and installation of one Kohler Diesel Generator for the Cherry Town Tower, Cherry Town Tower to Fidelity Power Systems in the amount of $56,172.
Second.
Say that five times fast.
I know, right?
Okay, motion, second and discussion. Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, let's talk about the Northern Landfill Transfer Station Floor Replacement. Good morning, Mr. Engel.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right. The Office of Procurement in Cooperation with the Bureau of Solid Waste requests your approval to award the design services for the Northern Landfill Transfer Station Floor Replacement to GeoSynTech Consultants of Columbia, Maryland in the base amount of $58,540 plus a fiscal year '24 contract rate increase allowance. The Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority competitively bid for all on-call engineering services. The county's agreement with the authority allows us to request proposals from the firms that were rewarded contracts. The requests for proposals were sent to five firms and two responded. This project is in the solid waste CIP budget and no additional funds should be needed.
Good morning, Commissioners. As noted, replacement of the waste handling side tipping floor at the Northern Landfill Transfer Station is an approved CIP project. And it's necessary due to the continued degradation of the concrete floor. I've got one picture up now and we'll go through a couple more at the end. Through our membership in the Northeast Maryland Authority, as noted, we solicited for the design, construction RFP prep, and construction inspection services for this project. This is just, so this is just the design phase and then some construction management and CQA during the construction. Based on the review of the proposals, Bureau of Solid Waste and Northeast Authority staff recommended selection of GeoSynTech Consultants for this work. GeoSynTech also provided design and construction services for when the transfer station, after the transfer station floors were placed back in 2009. So they do have kind of a home field advantage. They're very, very familiar with our project here. If the selection is approved, the Northeast Authority will issue a work order to GeoSynTech under the existing on-call contract. But again, as noted, given that the project will commence in fiscal '24, the contract value would be adjusted to reflect a pending rate increase of $4,460, set to go into effect July 1st of 2023. You know, thus, we're requesting approval for $63,000 for this part of the project. It is CIP Project 6543, and the total project, including construction, is $410,000. Just for background, because four of you were not here when this project was initiated, the picture that's on the screen currently was taken inside, left-hand side of our transfer station. This is the waste tipping floor side. The other half of the building is for recyclables. The building, again, was built originally in 1999. The left two bays, which are the left two sections in this picture, are original to that building. They're eight inches of concrete with rebar. The right-hand two bays were replaced in 2009 because mostly that's where the activity occurs. So they took a pretty good beating over the first 10 years. And Matt's controlling the slideshow here, so if he could go to the next one. I think he's controlling it. There we go. This is a view looking backwards, again, standing from where the excavator sits that loads the trailers. You can see in the background there a darker area. That's where the majority of this damage is. Next slide, please. There we go. Again, this is primarily bays one and two, the original floor. The eight inches of concrete is worn down to something in the neighborhood of four. You can see the top of some rebar there in the picture as well. You can also see ground if we dug deep enough. We've patched this area a couple of times over the last few years. It's just to the point where it's not worth patching anymore. That's kind of like putting Bondo on a car. You run out of metal, no place left to put the Bondo. Next picture. Now, this is the right-hand two bays. This was the area that was replaced in 2009. It was replaced with eight inches of 6,000 PSI concrete, steel fiber reinforcements and no rebar. The floor's held up amazingly well since that time, but it does get abraded, it does get worn. And where the excavator sits, the eight inches is probably down to about five or six right now. We did have a discussion about resurfacing that area and replacing the rest. But since we don't know what's going on with the subbase below it, where it's been broken up for a while, that subbase could be saturated. Everybody just agrees that it's probably best one time, take it all out and replace it all with something like is shown in that slide. So that's what this project, again, is just for the design, primarily for the design phase. And again, construction quality assurance when the project kicks off and preparation of the bid documents as well. And if you have any questions, we can answer.
Any questions? Any discussion? Okay.
Motion to award the contract for the Northern Landfill Transfer Station Floor Design Services to GeoSynTech Consultants in the amount of $63,000 to reflect the pending fiscal year '24 contract rate adjustment.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about the installation of walkway lighting at the Farm Museum.
I'm taking care of Carrie's as well. She's on vacation this week. So I'm it. The Office of Procurement in Cooperation with the Bureau of Building Construction requests your approval for the installation of the pole lighting at the Carroll County Farm Museum in the amount of $47,832.0 to Eastern Sales and Engineering Company Incorporated. This purchase has been made through Charles County Contract, RFQ 20-19. That was competitively bid. This amount is within the approved budget.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Thank you for your time this morning. I know you've had a busy agenda. As Ryan said, this, this request is to, for the installation of pathway lighting at the Farm Museum from the main entrance to the property up to what they refer to as the wedding barn. And with the installation of these lights, A, it'll provide much better safety for those folks that are there when the hours change. It'll allow weddings to occur when the time changes in the dark time of the year. So the poles are on their way for delivery and we're hoping for installation in July, if at all possible. So just pending those shipping schedules. And as Ryan said, this is within our budget and don't request any additional funds. And happy to answer any questions you may have.
Cool. Just, Joe, does the Farm Museum have a priority list of things that they want to accomplish as far as purchases at the museum?
There are a couple of things at the top of the list. One of them was having the bathrooms upgraded that we approved with the previous budget. Lighting was one of them. Paving the parking lot as a whole was another one. I know they've been having some issues with water flow down the course of the parking lot, but primarily those three things, the bathrooms, the lighting, and the parking lot.
Okay, because there's always a challenge to me sometime, well, sometimes.
Oh, and the fence, I'm sorry.
You get the good idea fairy. You get the good ideas just coming, hey, what about this? What about this? As opposed to documenting, these are the priorities we want to accomplish over the next few years and lighting being one of them, like you said. I was just curious.
Oh, and the fencing too, that we took care of a couple of months back.
Right. Yep. Okay. Cool.
Motion to award the installation of walkway lighting at the Carroll County Farm Museum to Eastern Sales and Engineering Company Incorporated in the amount of $47,832.
Second.
I got a motion, got a second and discussion. Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Let's talk about the Otterdale Mill Road Bridge Repair.
Morning. Yeah, very nice time.
The Office of Procurement in Cooperation with the Bureau of Engineering requests your approval to award a contract to Concrete General Incorporated in the amount of $157,426.88. Concrete General Incorporated was awarded a contract which was competitively bid with the Maryland Department of Transportation and State Highways Administration. The county will piggyback off this contract for the repair work. The amount is within the adopted budget.
Good morning. Otterdale Mill Road, District One, structure was built in 1930 and reconstructed in 1982. During a recent inspection, the inspecting engineer noted a failure of the offset brackets and issued a letter of concern to us and Maryland Department of Transportation. There are 48 offset brackets which attach to traffic barrier posts to the structure, superstructure beams of the structure. This work will include removing and replacing all the brackets, reattaching the traffic barrier posts, and performing the necessary traffic control. It's expected the structure will remain open with the one-lane traffic. They'll use a sniper truck to get to the work on the side of the bridge. Concrete General has completed bridge work for us in the past. And as was noted, the contract we're using is a Maryland Department of Transportation contract for structural repairs, exactly what we're doing here. So if you have any questions?
Do you guys in-house do the inspection or is that a consultant?
It's a consultant through the Maryland Department of Transportation.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Motion to award the contract to Concrete General Incorporated for the Otterdale Mill Road Bridge Repair in the amount of $157,426.88.
Second.
I got a motion, got a second. Seeing here, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Great job. Matt, do we have anybody on the phone? Okay, thank you very much. Open admin, anything on your minds?
Aye.
I was gonna say, I have a few things. One is we are scheduled to have a work session dealing with ag. Is that, you know?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday. The purpose of that, are there issues that we want to address during that work session? If there are, great, we maintain it. If not, you know, let's take a look at that, you know? I just want to make sure it's value for all. The other is Mako, legislative work sessions are starting. And it's important that we voice our issues because those are the issues that we bring to the administration for, well, for the delegation, to the Senate delegates, saying these are the issues that are important to us for them to, you know, consider. Obviously, blueprint cannabis, we've talked about those. But if there are other legislative issues that we want to forward, please let me know. I mean, this is not, you know, I'm representing us. It's not me at a table representing me, but I want to make sure that I capture our intent in moving forward. So that's really important.
Along with that, and you guys have all probably heard some of our delegations say it, so many people wait until December even to say, I'd really like to see this bill or I have comments on this. And they don't have time to get the stuff together. And particularly, if we're looking at grants or anything like that, if they get to physically see it, they can fight better for it. So yeah, sooner's better than later.
Absolutely, sooner's definitely, especially if we're talking about projects, we want them to champion some bond bills for dollars, whether it's American Legion or Hampstead or wherever, you know, that we think may be a good idea. The playgrounds, these are, you know, ideas, keep it, you know, keep it relevant to our delegation is a good way of saying it, I think.
So do you want us to bring these up in a session or do you want us to email you or what's the?
No, not email me, email us. Yeah, and we can, any way you want. I haven't really figured it out past what I'm saying right now. I'm just saying what's on my mind. You know?
Normally in August, we bring up legislative initiatives and from the board.
I know at Mako, I'm going to a meeting, a board meeting. And I just don't know if it's on a Wednesday afternoon or Thursday. That may be time, so prior to that.
And they originally had the Legislative Committee meeting as early as this week. They backed it up to July and they might have backed. backed it up to July, and they might have backed it up a second time, I can't remember, but...
I just, you know, honestly, I just want to be more inclusive. I want to, well, not more, I apologize, I want to be inclusive, to ensure that all our voices are heard on what we want to share. You know, we have, like Robert said, and this is also for the community, knowing these are the issues that's in front of us, work sessions regarding budget, you know, ensuring that we start shaping that. We have holes on all our calendars, but how we want to shape that moving forward through summer, so put a little meat on the bones. I think the bones are out there, as far as the schedule, now he's got to put the meat on it. And, you know, it doesn't have to be open session issues, I mean, but it's really good for, I believe, for our county, our community to know, these are the things that we're dealing with over summer, and doesn't mean that we're just stopping. However, stopping, July 6th, right now, open session has nothing scheduled on it. July 4th is a Tuesday, July 6th is Thursday, we can make a determination whether we want to continue with July 6th in open session, or my recommendation is not having open session on July 6th. We have a heavy open session on June 29th, I think is the one before, but if we can make that determination, that would be a good thing, whether we want to have a July 6th open session or not, so.
I'm okay with foregoing it, I mean, not having it.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that?
I concur.
I agree.
Okay, so I made that easy. And I apologize, was there any other open admin? Yes?
We talked about this briefly, there's a resolution that the board had signed previously that in my absence, the sort of the line of succession when I'm not around, and now that we have the new position of Deputy County Administrator, this just updates that, so that in my absence, it would be the Deputy County Administrator, and then the other two positions would be third and fourth. So I'm asking the board to sign this.
And has no, you know, not trusting a man wearing a salmon-colored tie, or whatever color that is. I mean, that has nothing to do with it, right?
I was waiting for somebody to mention that.
You have confidence in a salmon pink, I don't know...
He does feel rather demoted, but...
I think I've been demoted to the designated survivor, remember that?
We'll get the bunker ready.
Feel like it's a pink salmon can, that's what comes out of it, so, okay.
Or Tim.
Oh, don't go there. Wanda, come on up.
Hello, Wanda.
Hello, good morning.
Okay, June 26th, we have nothing scheduled, neither do we have anything scheduled on the 27th. June 28th, there's a virtual planning and zoning commission at 6:00 PM. I heard the last one went pretty long and a lot of attention on it.
Yes, it's a...
7:00 PM ESAC, Commissioner Garin will be attending. On Thursday, June 29th, we start with 9:00 AM, open session. Let's see. Proposed ordinance amending Chapter 94. Do we know what Chapter 94 is? Is that the trails? Is that the trails?
It's the e-bikes.
E-bikes, okay, so that's the ordinance regarding the...
It's the park ordinance, so...
Right, okay. And then we go into discussion and decision on the water and sewer triennial update. Then Carroll County Workforce Development, FY '24, planning year '23 grants.
Well, you're on that subject. She has invited us to visit, and I don't know whether...
Oh, Heather.
You know, again, whether we want to try to do something as a group, or just each go, whenever.
I think just each of you go when it's convenient, I think that was more of a...
Yeah, that's the easiest, right?
Going in individual or pairs is always the easiest, I think. And you're talking about Heather Powell, right?
Yes.
Then we're gonna have Freedom District Water Treatment Plant Harmonic Filter and Transformer.
That sounds exciting.
Sounds kind of 1980s.
Maybe it's harmonious, I don't know, but harmonic filter. And then Inspection Services of Maryland 851 Springfield Water and Sewer Improvements. They just had a water main break on Main Street last week, and it was a mess. So hopefully that's all fixed up, because they do have a Saturday this July 2nd, right? Yeah, next Saturday. Then building code updates, discussion, Court Smart Support Services from our IT folks, annual maintenance support and lifecycle management of the Motorola, Public Safety Motorola radio systems, maintenance support and upkeep of the Central Maryland Area Radio Communication Network, C-Mark. And then Medical Director for the Department of Fire EMS Renewal. At 1:00 PM, we are scheduled to go into a work session on agricultural zone ordinance, and we just have to determine, again, if there's enough meat on the bones, that's great. If not, let's determine whether we want to continue with that or not. Friday, nothing scheduled, Saturday, I apologize.
There have been some emails going back and forth on topics.
Yes, and, go ahead, go ahead. I personally think after, without getting into detail right now, but after planning and zoning the other day, I think there was enough that kind of fell into that category. It might be ideal for us to look at that.
Okay, cool. So we'll maintain it at 1:00 PM. On Saturday, July 1st, there's a Sykesville Let Freedom Ring Parade. I will be attending and participating, because I get to ride in a really cool convertible, Audrey and I, so that's a lot of fun. And then I'll have the podcast the next day, and I'll talk about the Sykesville Let it Freedom Ring Parade. No, we'll see what I talk about. On the following week, extremely busy week, Monday, nothing scheduled, Tuesday, happy 4th of July, nothing scheduled, federal holiday, the offices will be closed. Wednesday, July 5th, nothing scheduled, Thursday, July 6th, we determined that we will not have open session. Friday, 7th, Saturday, 8th, nothing scheduled, and Commissioner Vigliotti will talk about all the things that nothing was scheduled on on July 9th.
I'll have to be cumulative for the entire summer thus far.
Anything I miss, Wanda? Anything I miss?
Speaking of podcasts, and Commissioner Weaver evidently did this, invited people to do it with him. And I did say something at our ESAC meeting, and they are going to attend my next one, and I just, not that Commissioner Weaver is somebody to follow, but...
Absolutely not.
But, you know...
If you do, you'll fall over him, because he's kind of slow. Yeah, I've had, I've had the sheriff, I've had others also.
Who's gonna be your, who's gonna be your guest, your podcast guest, do you know yet? The entire group, or just...
I'd have to look at the email for sure, because, and we even talked about, and which is another option, too, I should mention, we talked about the date and time, and those guys can patch it together, if you want somebody and they can't come in the same day you're here, you can kind of introduce them and have them patch it in. But, yeah, I'd have to look at the email, sorry.
That's a good idea.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else for the group? I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.